All right. We'll go ahead and follow this. Welcome everyone to the Tuesday, October 27th, 2020 Electronic Hybrid Board Workday. And I'll take a little coming to you from the very end. So I just want to remind everyone on April 6th, the City Council adopted a new CR-12, which allows the school board to meet electronically in order to address funding for the operation. Our electronic meetings will be open to the public. There will be an opportunity for the public to make public comments. You read the meeting and all meeting notices will be posted on the website. If you need them, they're available.
Yes, Dr. Anderson. Dr. Dimick. Ms. Downs. Ms. Litten. Mr. Reitinger. Ms. Russell. And Mr. Webb. Thank you.
Thank you. Would you all please write? Thank you. The 112 states of America and to the Republic of Canada stand one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Why would you come more importantly than me? Thank you. Thank you through, um, Ms. Goodell.
Yes, Dr. Anderson. Dr. Dimick. Ms. Downs. Ms. Litten. Mr. Reitinger.
Yes.
Ms. Russell.
Yes.
And Mr. Webb.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Going on now to item two on the agenda, public comments and requests. We'll read the statement and then we'll discuss it. But as a reminder to the public, while the state of emergency remains ineffective COVID-19, written statements may be submitted to the board for dissemination to board members. Public comments will be read into the record for a period of 30 minutes or until all submitted comments are read, which are the first. And in accordance with school board policy, BDDH, the time for each speaker is limited to three minutes. Please send your written comments to school board clerk Marty Goodell at goodellm@scps.org. Public comments received by 10 a.m. on the day of the meeting will be posted on board documents prior to the meeting. Ms. Goodell, do you have any comments to add?
No, we do not have any comments.
Okay. Thank you very much. Then we will go ahead and move on to our first business action on the agenda, item 351 of the PPA. Dr. Goodell, thank you for this.
Yes, thank you Chair Anderson. Good evening, everybody. It's great to see you all here. I have taken a picture, just by the way, so you might see yourself on Twitter tonight in our, in our new hybrid setting here. I appreciate you all being here and supporting our staff and everyone else who's also coming back through your leadership. This evening, we have a contract with, well, let me back up. Let me just say, this is sort of a big moment for us in the grand scheme of the high school development, insofar as we have said all along, we wanted to be a net zero green school that was lead gold and also geothermal. And the way that you get to begin to approach being net zero is by utilizing power from solar arrays to offset the amount of electricity that we're taking off of the grid. And tonight, what we are presenting to you is a contract with Segora, which is a company that does the development of and construction of arrays that are rooftop arrays. And we had, they've come out, they've shared with us, with us a design. We are utilizing the Fairfax County Public Schools contract that has been signed and the county's, it's a county contract that's been signed to ride off of their contracts. So we have very competitive pricing. But tonight, we are asking your approval to sign this 30-year contract with Segora that the net result for us will mean a savings of $850,000 over the time of the, of the contract. And also we'll begin to get at being net zero. Our initial work through this will take about 35% off of our energy bills. As we move forward, we're hoping to expand the arrays that Segora has looked at, that they could, other places that they could put the arrays. And we're looking forward to continuing to grow those arrays and move, move forward. But the other nice thing that's sort of exciting about this contract, that over a certain period of time, if we are able to develop the infrastructure appropriately, we would also be able to use Segora to look at doing some solar at all of our schools here in the city of Falls Church. So, so tonight, it's been sort of a long road to get here because we've been talking about a PPA for, since the Sunday series, going back to the Sunday series, you might recall. But tonight, we are there and very excited to be able to plug something into our net zero ready building. You may recall, our original bid that went out to our construction companies for bid was that the building would be net zero ready. And now we get to connect something to that net zero ready. And that Segora has done a great job putting together a package for us. So with that, unless there's any questions, I'll ask Kristin if she wants to add anything. We also have Kate Dydak on the line with Railford Dunleavy. So who's been instrumental in helping us get all of this work done with Segora. She's worked with her colleagues on the B and E side to make sure that we get the best possible deal with the highest efficiency, the highest efficiency systems that we can get and really feel like the overtime savings that we capture is going to be really a great opportunity for us. So Kristin, do you have anything you'd like to add?
I think the other deciding piece is the solar is really an educational tool for our students. So in addition to the city's, their separate instructional budget as well.
Ms. Goodell, do you have anything you want to add?
No, the only piece would be that we are writing off the Fairfax County contract. So what the board is doing tonight would be authorizing the chair to sign the rider contract to the Fairfax County contract. And then we're waiting for a few more things from Segora and Dr. Newton would sign the power first agreement within the next two weeks, we hope.
Thank you, Dr. Newton. Are there any questions? Dr. Goodell, I am also making sure to look at my screen. If you have any questions. I saw your hand, but please go ahead.
Thank you Chair. Just one question. In looking through the documents, particularly the deck, there appear to be sort of two distinct proposals. The first part that references the rooftop proposal, and there's one that appears to involve a broader scope, including, I don't know, perhaps canopies over parking facilities? We're talking here about the, the first top smaller rooftop only proposal?
That is correct.
All right. Okay, sorry. Go ahead, Kate.
Sorry, um, yes, that is correct. We are discussing tonight just the rooftop proposal for the high school, which will be on three different roofs on the, on the high school building.
Thank you, Diane. Mr. Ryan, does that answer the question? Do you have anything to know? Mr. Ryan, does there give you anything to know?
Yes, Chair.
Thank you. Any other questions from anyone else? Looking around the room. All right. Seeing none, then I would take the motion on this item.
Chair, I'm moved that the school board authorized the rider contract between the small public schools and the board of school and LLC.
Thank you, Dr. Dimick. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Goodell. Ms. Goodell.
Yes, Dr. Anderson. Dr. Dimick. Ms. Downs. Ms. Litten. Mr. Reitinger.
Yes.
Ms. Russell. And Mr. Webb. Thank you, and the motion passes.
All right. Thank you very much. So then I'll bring to this 2102 on the agenda, which is the discussion on the procedure for hybrid meetings. And this is an item for us to talk about in the end. I would like to hopefully have a sense of the consensus of the board about how we want to approach starting with our November 10. And as a starting point for discussion, I can just relate some ideas out as initial starting point. That's what they are for folks to be able to comment on and start from a positive place. That's sort of the goal. So I think of this as three pieces. The first is sort of the basic model. We would have our meetings and our work sessions here in the head of the conference forum and build such points as safe enough to be in different departments. We'd have hybrid notes for board members and staff, which it's a little bit of a funny thing just to say, we're meeting electronically under the governor's emergency orders and under the emergency ordinance. But we talk about it in hybrid mode, but we could probably have it in the same way that we're talking about hybrid education type of process. So that's sort of the thought. So board members and staff could be in hybrid notes. Some people here in the room, but some people attending remotely via Zoom that we're doing right now. And the meetings and work sessions would be streamed live and publicly viewed. So the basic model, the only real change is the idea that we would actually have some people physically independent here attending. That's sort of the first part. Then there's a question about public attendance, actually having members of the public physically present in the room. And I wanted to suggest a model for that and see where the board feels level of comfort is about, and we can have that conversation. The idea being that we would allow members of the public to come in physically here. There would be a capacity movement driven by safety protocols and health protocols that parallel those that we have to use for the, for the real bill. We would require registration by the sometime on the day of the meeting. I suggest on a box of this, when you can grow the things, but that's a possession. But there was a pre-registration so that we can figure out how to arrange the meeting for people so that there is sufficient separation. We kind of need to know how many people would come in order to figure out what that secret was. We would require both attending to our face met, face government, but we're doing right now, to follow all of the protocols that are in the reopening plan in terms of, if you've got a new pump, if you've got a new pump, and this is because you've got a leak, you don't pump, those sorts of things. And there would be temperatures taken before entry to the meeting. So that'd be, that's a model that we could use. And then in the end, the question comes, you know, what if somebody used a mask down or if we wear one or we just simply take appropriate aggressive steps to deal with that, starting as simple as we going through individual spaces with your mask on or we can take a reset to deal with it. The idea is people to be able to come in to observe, to, to follow the thing for the health and safety protocol. And then the other question that comes up is public comments and how the public actually makes comments. I'd like to suggest that we return to our fire practice of having live comments at our meetings, but not having comment at our work session. That's how we used to do it. Just going to come back to that. Then we could allow comments both in person, but also via Zoom, so that we maximize the participation of the public. Those don't feel comfortable coming in person, becoming a Zoom meeting if they're coming. We would need to have a registration process. It could be in principle the same or then use tomorrow whether or not you want to come in physically. But we didn't have to have a reservation, a registration process. And I would suggest that we reserve up to 30 minutes of each of our meetings for comments as we've been doing in order for people to be able to access comments. Or until we put all of the registered, teachers are registered, remote doors open, and we just go to that point, continue to do three minutes per comment, that's in keeping with our BDDH policy. And then finally, that we would accept written comments and they would be posted to board documents, but we wouldn't be reading written comments into the reference. So we maximize the chance for people to actually speak to us and also allow us to continue to communicate. So that's sort of a, a starting model. And now I want to open it up to comments and ask some questions. Anybody who wants to answer the call. So looking to hand.
I raised this last time. Again, I, I heard what they think. Our meeting last Thursday went well with comments. Specifically, that seemed to work very well. I would suggest we are independent. I am comfortable for us to definitely get a hybrid, as we're doing now, some of us here are still left to do the book. But I don't see a reason to open the meeting to the public when you have successfully shown that we can take public comments by Zoom and allow the public to comment without providing any encouragement to the public, for the public to take any risk you're there to do without.
Thank you, Dr. Dimick. Other comments? Other thoughts?
I would say I actually agree with what Chair Anderson laid out. I think I feel kind of in unity with our staff and teachers that, you know, if they're having a lot of students in the school, that it doesn't seem unreasonable that we let people come in and make public comments. I mean, I think the reality is that probably most people are still going to want to do it by Zoom. I don't really expect we're going to get a big crowd of people who want to come in if they can make comments by Zoom. But I just think it's kind of symbolic to have that as an option for people.
Yes, I would agree with, thank you, Chair. I agree with Ms. Litten. I think that, you know, as it is a turning point for our school system and as we begin to hold on, we've already welcomed some students back into the classroom. And as we continue on that path, you know, I think it's, it's important for us to mirror what's being done in the schools. And I think as long as we take appropriate precautions to make sure that the public is, whether it's seated to observe or to make comment, that they're, you know, the appropriate distance away. I mean, and I think, you know, I remember in the good old days and before the pandemic, we would often have groups come in and present about different things. We might have like a group of, you know, class of students coming in, you know? I think as long as we sort of hold off on those, over bringing in lots of people, you know, we just limit it to people making public comments, what people observing. And for now, we'll have to just hold off on some of those presentations that we've done in the past, just to limit our participants. But I think it's reasonable and I, and I feel that, you know, we'll take the proper precautions and it's also just sort of being in solidarity with our teacher and our staff.
Thank you. But Chair, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think one other point to consider too is there's an access issue. And I think by allowing people to attend in person or electronically, and that just offer, opens up more opportunities for people who maybe aren't comfortable using Zoom or don't have access, whatever the reason. But I think just allowing in person, if that person really feels that they want to make a statement, will also address any equity or access issue itself.
Mr. Webb. Before making comments, what would the, have a, 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 have[1168.34]
That would be something that I would want to know for committing. I do agree that, uh, that folks prefer to come back if you think the good. If some of, uh, we're doing some of that as well ourselves, it's important. But I do want to know that asking with me. And I would say, uh, what about noon is just a cost of where it would be. My purpose is being too clear. I was not there. I either I was with, if we, uh, the right, um, in general supporters of it. What number? Okay. One of them. Um, by your right, you guys, sorry.
Um, yeah, I guess first of all, with regard to Mr. Webb's statement, I would like to throw out there that we start with a relatively small number like 10 and see what the demand is and if we need to consider adjusting that upward. Then we consider that I think just putting a manageable cap on it at the beginning wouldn't make me more comfortable. The second thing that I wanted to mention was something more procedural. And that would be that within the operations aspect of it, that we put a time that people have to arrive by. So let's say that people must arrive by 6:50 PM in order to make sure that they have the temperature checks and go through the appropriate protocols. And that way staff can also be in place for meeting by 7:00. So I think that we say that 6:50, anyone who's not here by 6:50 will be turned away would be reasonable, given that we want to make sure again that protocols are done, but also staff is able to attend the meeting at a time.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Reddick, you haven't made a comment. That's all from short, uh, short. If you want to.
I guess the only thing Chair that I'd raise is I, I, I think some thought needs to be given to the enforcement protocols in the sense that we, we haven't ever had to worry about what we're going to do in the event of a disruptive person making public comments. I, I think the risk is at least slightly higher that someone might come in and not obey the right ordinances. So they're not saying we need a police officer present in the meetings or anything, but there needs to be a plan for what to do if somebody fails to obey safety protocols and does not follow instructions of Chair or staff posing a risk to the people attending the meeting.
Thanks, Mr. Reddick. Uh, Dr. Noonan.
Uh, to that, to that point, and thank you, um, Mr. Reddick for raising that. I think we would likely keep secure toss in place and extend their hours, not unlike we did the other night for the public hearing, which could be part of our standard routine and process. Um, and we can force him for a little bit of money towards that, that to have that person in place. That wouldn't be the person that would necessarily do the temperature checking and the like, but they would be here in case there was a need to call for additional help and support.
Mr. Reddick, uh, does that answer the question that you raised? Or do we sort of start to start toward an end?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I, I don't have a particular proposal, just that we need a plan for what we're going to do, and that sounds like a plan.
Okay, thank you. Um, so the other, so what I'm hearing is most people are comfortable with a limited number of people being able to attend the person. But not everybody, um, but that starting small seems to be, uh, uh, if it's starting small, go anywhere toward a different, you know, your concern.
I would, I would appreciate that. Um, I think, you know, we all have different conceptions with risk. And, um, it, it just seems to me why increase risk if you don't have.
So then, uh, sorry, there's another comment.
It's not necessarily associated with Dr. Demick's comment, so I'll, I'll revert until that piece is over.
Okay, thanks. Um, so what I'm sort of then sensing is that there's at least a reasonable level consensus that we could move to a model where we allow a small number of people to be able to be attending physically, but we also continue to, to set it up on a zoom and have people make a call. Not a fair, for the summary of the average of everybody's perspective. Go ahead.
I think it's kind of one question. Um, I'm just thinking about public comments and if most people who are coming in are only coming in to make their comments and leave versus if people are planning today. Um, because it seems like if there's a number of people who just want to make a comment, you know, they could come in and go, I don't really know how we sort of figure that out, even if it's just an ask in them, you know, you kind of say, because it seems definitely we should limit the number of people who are here sitting in here with us. But, you know, if people want to come in and make a comment and leave, it could affect a little bit bigger number. So I don't really know how we balance that thought.
So I, I gave a little thought idea myself. So if the idea is we want to allow public comment both in person, potentially and be with no, and we want to have a maximum duration for which we're doing this, um, we need a registration process and that sort of, it makes sense that you would have the same registration process, deal with the situation, someone wants to come in person and on them because otherwise I'd even know the story of this topic. So it would seem we could ask, you know, registration forms could be principles that are to ask, do you intend, would you like to attend the meeting? Do you want to make public comment or what we offer? If you want to make public comment, do you also want to attend it first? Kind of that sort of there, because the other thing we need to know is if they're not coming in person, we need to be able to get to them. We would have to know whether that person will be. This, my, missing and obvious, I want to make sure I understand what you're saying. Um, all right, Dr. Noonan, you got a different?
Uh, I have two comments. One is, um, I'm getting some feedback that we just continue needing to speak up. Um, and the second is, um, with respect to the governor's order, uh, I, I do think actually we could continue to take public comment, but just put it in on the website. So as opposed to not taking any public comment, we would still welcome public comment, but then put it in if that's acceptable. I think we're going to have to continue to take public comment.
So you're thinking during the work session?
During the work sessions, as long as we're under governor's orders, I think we still have to take public comment, but we don't have to read it. We can just put it out, put it out.
Okay, so that would be a modification to say we have live public comment during meetings, but not live public comment during the work sessions. We just accept written comments and get posted before talking.
That's correct.
Okay. Okay. Um, so generally, the rest of the idea that I'm, I'm not hearing anybody object to the concept that we want to allow live talk without sound and that's accurate. By Zoom in person, you want to do that? What do people think about the idea of setting aside a specific period of time at the beginning of the meeting for the 30 minutes, stuff like that? For sure, you all have people feel about this. Here's one.
Usually before the pandemic, was it open ended? We didn't have a limit, is that correct?
That's correct. And, and that's the difference. I think because we are under the limits here, we are putting a, a limit seems like a mitigation.
We're actually going to cut that mic off.
Okay.
And ask you to turn your mics back on on your computer.
Let's get out of here.
Yes, I, I can hear you. I don't hear anything.
Can you hear me now?
Now I can.
I was just going to say, so can we turn that down, that speaker? Actually, we can turn that speaker off. We're going to work this out. Now, can you hear me, Ms. Goodell?
Very clearly.
Okay. Can you, could you hear Marty coming through yours? Oh, you can turn your sound back on.
We all turn our sound.
Yeah, go ahead and turn your sound back on. Just unmute, kind of like we have, yep. All right, Ms. Goodell, can you hear me okay? So why don't we take a couple of minutes of a recess just to test, make sure we've got the sound working before we continue to any real conversation. Mr. Reddinger, is this better for you from me speaking?
Um, a little easier to understand, um, but I, I could make out what you were saying before, Chair. Uh, there's a little bit of an echo in the current form, but I can hear you either way. The, the only two people that were very, very difficult to decipher were Dr. Demick and Mr. Webb, who were the people farthest from the center mic. Except, and I just had, Dr. Dr. Noonan was clear before for me, his voice projects, projects quite well.
The teacher and me, Mr. Reddinger. Mr. Reddinger, is that any better?
Yes.
Okay. I will keep my headset on so that I can be heard by Mr. Reddinger remotely, since everybody else can hear me live. Uh, and that minimizes the chance of us hearing a very loud squeal. All right. Um, Dr. Demick, will you do this for Mr.?
Hi, Phil, how are you? Good working, okay.
All right, and Mr. Webb?
Hello, Bill, we're good.
All right, Mr. Brett, is that working better? All right. All right, thank you. Um, I think we're all ready to get back to going. Okay, so we'll, we're done with that little recess, let's get back on, on this. Um, so my question that I was asking is, um, do people feel comfortable with a, a limited period of time? As Litten brought up, that in, in the days before we were under the pandemic and the emergency order, we would, if people came physically present, they would, we would keep going until we had hit the numbers, number of people in the room. Um, I'm suggesting that we certainly, we consider at least as a transitional step, sticking with a, with a roughly 30 minute period of time, um, so that we can, we can have a, it's a both a risk mitigation, but it's also a time strategy. So I don't know how people feel about that. Ms. Downs? Okay, thank you. Other thoughts on this one? All right. Um, unless I hear an objection, then I'm going to take it as a general sense that a 30 minute window, three minutes per comment, and we go as many as, as, uh, people can, and people need to register in advance, and then we go as many as we can in that 30 minutes. So I'm looking at you, Mr. Reddinger, to make sure that, that you're okay with that too. Okay. So really, this comes down to the question, I guess, just finally, if we do put a small number at the beginning and see how it goes, is that raise your level of comfort enough, Dr. Demick?
Yeah.
Okay. So then, I'm just going to say this back to everyone and make sure that we are all in agreement, and I'm going to be looking for a sense that people are nodding and, and so on, and if I get something wrong, don't nod and raise the objection so that we catch that. So we will have our meeting, our, our work sessions and our meetings here in hybrid mode in the cafeteria. Members and staff can, will be in hybrid mode. Um, you can be here physically, if you need to be in remotely, you come in remotely via Zoom. Um, we'll stream our work sessions and our meetings publicly, uh, via YouTube, like we've been doing. Um, we would, uh, we will allow, uh, public attendance during meetings, but a small number. Um, the number that I heard nominated was no more than 10, uh, to start, and we'll have to look and see if, um, if there's some other restriction that means it maybe needs to be a little bit lower, but certainly no more than 10. Um, everyone who comes in person would need to register in advance, uh, and part of that registration would be to tell us also whether they intend to make public comment or not. Um, we would, everyone coming would need to wear a face covering at all times while they're in the building. Um, they would need to follow the physical distancing requirements that, that we are and all of the other health and safety protocols for our reopening plan. And we would be having temperature screenings as a requirement for coming into the building, and anyone who doesn't pass that would not be allowed to come in. Um, Ms. Minson and I will have to work on the appropriate language for dealing with situations in which someone comes in and then chooses not to comply with the health and safety requirements, but we will start with taking a recess in the meeting and dealing with the situation as necessary. But Mr. Reddinger, I take your caution, and we will definitely have, uh, definitely work those details out. And then overall, public comment, we would return to our practice of having live public comment during our meetings. Uh, during work sessions, people would certainly be able to submit, um, submit written comments, um, but we would not read those into the record. We would post them to board docs and, and they'd be available, but we wouldn't read them into the record. And then, um, we would require people to register in advance to let us know, partially because that way we can figure out how much space we need and partially so that people can get the links, uh, to comment on Zoom, and we can figure out how many commenters we have. And it would be a 30 minute period at the beginning of the meeting, as we've been doing since June. So is that, I think that's basically the, the plan. I'm looking to make sure if there are nods, disagreements. Okay, and Mr. Reddinger, you have your hand up.
Not a, not a disagreement at all, just to note, something I'm sure the administration would do anyway, but, um, and this might have been done at the, uh, at the public comment session, but to, to map out the areas where the 10 seats or whatever the number will be to make sure they meet, um, requirements and sort of, there has to be a rule, or there likely should be a rule, that the seats don't get moved. Um, so the room needs to be configured for all of that, but I'm sure that would be done.
Absolutely. We would, uh, we would put markings on the floor and make sure they don't get moved. They'd stay within a box. All right, then, um, I, are you, assuming there was no objection, and you said there wasn't, I'm going to take a nod then, Mr. Reddinger, that you're okay. All right, so that'll be the mode going forward. Now, we need to communicate this to the public, and so we will, we will do that, um, in a variety of mechanisms, one of which is, now that we've said this, it's, it's out there, people can see it. I will work on, uh, work on a write-up of this, and, uh, and Mr. Brett, um, if we can work on putting, uh, you know, when you're putting, you've been putting out meeting summaries, and we'll put something together that might be good to consider for that, um, for the next one. And then I think as, uh, all other communication mechanisms that we can do make sense, and of course, it shows up in the public meeting notice on the website, so people know how this is going to be working out as well. So we'll take care of that communication process. I'm looking to make sure that everybody's okay. All right, thank you, everyone. Um, I think that's, uh, I think that brings that subject, uh, forward and allows us to, to know how we're going to be moving forward for, uh, for this. This will kick in on November 10th, which is our next meeting. So that's also the, uh, the day that, uh, the reopening for the elementary schools begins, and we bring back the K, K and three, um, on the November 10th. So I think that that all lines up nicely. All right, thank you. So now we move down to a 3.03, uh, school calendar discussion, and Dr. Noonan, I'll be looking toward you.
Thank you, Chair Anderson, and again, good evening, everybody. This evening, we, uh, can everybody hear me okay? All right, good. Um, this evening, um, our hope is that we can engage you in a conversation and ask for your guidance on, um, our upcoming school calendar discussion. Um, as, as you all know, last year was a relatively unique year. Seems like every year is unique right now, but this was particularly unique with respect to the calendar, insofar as we got into a longer conversation about whether we start before Labor Day or after Labor Day. And tonight's conversation really isn't about whether or not we start before or after Labor Day. We're actually seeking your input around some very specific items that we'd like to discuss. So, um, the goal for tonight's discussion is to really receive your input about the following. First is the calendar adoption, um, whether or not you all have interested in doing a one-year calendar or a two-year calendar. Also, we'd like to ask your input on adjustments to the potential holiday, to talk about that as we move forward. And last is, um, timeline of the calendar. So currently, our timeline has been, um, since I arrived even, uh, we did the calendar in, um, all right, all right, Phil, uh, we did the calendar in, um, the December timeline, so for, for December adoption. And so I know that there were some questions about whether or not that was the right timeline, whether it was to go, should go earlier or not go earlier. So if we go to the next slide, I have a couple of, um, districts that I wanted to share with you that are just for comparison purposes only, just to give you a sense of sort of what, um, some of our surrounding jurisdictions are doing, um, with respect to adoption. So I want to start with Arlington County. Um, Arlington County adopted their calendar for 2020, 2021 school year, that's this school year, in February, um, of last year, um, which was much later than we adopted our calendar. Um, and they do a one-year only calendar in, uh, in Arlington. Um, under, under that adoption, uh, piece, there's some information about holidays, um, and there are a number of holidays that Arlington, um, recognizes that are the same and one that is different. Uh, so for example, um, the Friday before Labor Day, because of the change in the state legislation that said if we started before Labor Day, we had to give, um, either the Friday off or have a four-day weekend, um, they do the Friday before, so just like us, they give the Friday before, uh, Labor Day. Additionally, they, um, they do as a non-student day, Indigenous Peoples' Day or Columbus Day, uh, and for us this year, that was a teacher work day. Um, Election Day is not a student day, um, just like it isn't for us here in the City of Falls Church. And then they, what's different in Arlington is that they do give Veterans' Day as a holiday. Um, and, and that is different, and they have not adopted their calendar for next year yet. So then if you look at Fairfax County's calendar, Fairfax County, um, does a two-year adoption, um, so they have adopted their, um, calendar for, um, next year, um, but, uh, there are some things that they have done a little bit differently with respect to, some say, some things are same, some are different with respect to holidays. So they also do the Friday before Labor Day, as required by the state, they do Indigenous Peoples' Day, they do Election Day, um, but they are having currently a conversation about adding religious holidays, um, into their calendar, and on September 3rd, the school board voted to discuss revisions at a future work session. So they, they have kicked that, uh, conversation down the line a little bit, um, and have not yet adopted their 21, 22 calendar. They have their calendar for next year already. I'm sorry, um, they do not have their calendar for next year, uh, yet, and so they are going to continue to talk about it at an upcoming work session. So we are in many ways sort of ahead of the curve here in terms of trying to figure out how we want to move forward. So the questions, and I'm going to go through all of these slides, and then we'll come back, if that's okay. So let me start with, um, the first question, and that is, do you want to adopt a year, a year calendar, or do you want to adopt multiple year calendars? And I think the options that are before you, um, it, just in terms of real operational structure, would be a one-year or a two-year. I suppose we could look at a three-year calendar, but I do think doing three years out becomes a little bit more complicated with respect to when testing windows are, um, and some other operational needs. So we could, we could do a schedule or a, a calendar for next year, or, uh, if it's the board's will, we would be happy to do a, a two-year calendar. The next thing is about potential adjustments for holidays. Um, the state recently adopted new legislation, and the governor signed it into law that Election Day is now a holiday, and so is Juneteenth. Um, just like any other state holiday, um, recognized holiday, we are not required to give that day off. It can be a teacher work day, it could be a student day, but oftentimes, we recognize these days as, um, as days. So for example, Indigenous Peoples' Day, um, was a teacher work day this year, but we didn't have students. Veterans' Day for us is a, is a day of school, um, and, and the like. Um, so there are two new holidays, though, that have come into play that I just wanted to put on your radar. Um, but there are some other holidays that you may want to revisit. One is Indigenous Peoples' Day or Columbus Day, and how do you, as a, as a board, want to handle that day? How do you want to handle Veterans' Day going forward? And then there are a number of religious holidays, um, given the pluralistic community that we live in, that you all may want to also consider as additional days off. Um, the first is Eid, the second is Rosh Hashanah, Yom Kippur, and also Diwali. Um, those are obviously some of the high holy days for each of those respective religions. Um, we did not include, for example, Ramadan in there because it's a month long, um, and some other of the, of the holidays, but we found that those were really sort of the, the big ones that, um, some people are beginning, other divisions across the country are beginning to recognize. And then the, the last slide, um, of, of things that we want you to consider are any other considerations that you want us to think about as we're putting together the calendar for this year. Um, there has been some guidance in the past where it has been, um, sort of the, the preference of the board to try to end by June 15th. So that would be, for example, one of the considerations that you may want us to continue to look at. Uh, if it's not something you want us to continue to look at, you know, and you want to, you want to say it's okay if you end school on 25th of June, um, you know, we're certainly open to that too, um, but whatever other considerations you may have. So with respect to the timeline, um, that we have, because, because what I said last year in this entire conversation about the school calendar was that once we went through that process, we were going to revert back to the way that we have traditionally done the calendar adoption. So we're gathering the school board input tonight and just trying to get from you just sort of a general sense of what your thoughts are with respect to, um, those three questions that we've raised. Then we would move into calendar development, and that calendar development, um, would occur through the month of November. Um, we have a very, very large calendar committee that comes together that's representative of a variety of different stakeholder groups, uh, and then we would bring the final calendar adoption to you, um, at a, a work session in November, and then for final approval in December. And we feel very confident that if, uh, you were to give us the guidance to look at a two-year calendar, that we could bring a, a two-year calendar to you in that timeframe. We certainly can bring you a one-year calendar, but we feel fairly confident that we can bring you a two-year calendar as well. So with those sort of ideas in mind, I'm going to back up to, um, the questions or the considerations that we're asking you to think about. Um, and there are a number of assumptions that we've put into the calendar conversation already, just as a reminder to you, it's 180 school days for students that have to attend. Um, we have 193 staff days, there are a certain number of professional development days, there are a certain number of in-service days, there are conference days and the like, um, that we do ask our staff to be part of. So, um, every time we add something in as a holiday, you know, something else comes out. So it's a really, uh, interesting sort of give and take in terms of the puzzle, and you might remember some of that from the conversations last year. So I guess the first question, Chair Anderson, is, um, the will of the board on a one-year
Having only been an observer last time, I can only say this as an observer, but boy, it seems to make sense to do it every two years. Why go through this every year? Uh, takes a lot of staff time, takes a lot of board time, can be contentious, um, and so to me, those all argue for two-year calendar, plus families can plan, really plan ahead. They know what's happening the following year, um, with that calendar.
Thank you, Dr. Demick. Um, others on the question of a one or two year? Ms. Litten?
I mean, generally, I think normally I would say I really like the idea of a two-year. I guess I feel this year, we've got a lot of stuff going on. Um, so to sort of work through two years worth of details seems like a lot, given everything happening. So I would almost recommend, maybe recommend doing a one-year this year, and then revisit this question next year, and maybe move to a two-year cycle.
Thank you, Ms. Litten. Uh, Ms. Downs?
Thank you, Chair Anderson. Uh, I, I, um, did feel as Dr. Demick did, but as Ms. Litten suggested, I too think maybe for this time, we stick with the one year. I, you, I know that Arlington is doing a pretty intense, um, survey of its community, um, because they haven't, they have included some additional religious holidays, which means that breaks, um, either winter break needs to be shortened or what have you, or they're going to go longer. So I think by including those religious holidays, they're asking their community, where are the, we going to get those, you know, where will we cut? You know, where will we cut from other places, or will we extend, you know, go later into June? So I think, you know, it's hard. I don't think, if we were thinking to do any kind of big changes, I think we might want to hear a little bit more community feedback. So I'm not sure if, and given Ms. Litten's points, it may make sense more for doing one-year now and maybe in the future, looking at making some bigger changes and then making that a two-year cycle. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Downs. Vice Chair Russell? Microphone?
I will start over. I would concur with Ms. Litten and Ms. Downs that, at this point, given everything that's going on, it probably would be easier on everyone to go with a one-year calendar. I think that we've had a lot of uncertainty, and hopefully, at some point in the very near future, that will even out quite a bit. But I think at this point in time, it would probably be easier just to work with a one-year calendar. And I don't know, are we just on the one- or two-year calendar question, or have we moved on to other considerations?
Right now, if we can do just the one-year, that'd be great.
I'll hold my questions regarding the other considerations, then.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Reitinger, I see your hand up.
I'm happy to go with the consensus of the board on one-year versus two-year. The one thing I would flag is that I'm a little worried about the mismatch with board terms. So for example, if we do one-year now and we do two-years next year, that means the incoming board members who are elected next year, because if we stick to the current timeframe, the calendar would actually get approved before they were sworn in, would have their entire two-years, two-years of their first term, if they are newly elected, with no opportunity to influence the calendar. And since that could be a majority of the board, that just feels a little bit odd to me, they wouldn't have a chance until, like, it's two and a half years into their term to influence a board calendar.
Mr. Reitinger, that might make an argument for doing one-year this time and perhaps again next time, as opposed to otherwise. But is that sort of the sense of what you mean with that?
I'm not actually making an argument. I'm just saying that that strikes me as a reasonable ground for consideration. And I don't know if people feel like the opportunity to influence a calendar is an important part of their board responsibilities that they'd want to have a say on. But if we do one-year now and two-years next year, that strikes me as a downside to be considered.
Thank you, Mr. Reitinger. Mr. Webb?
I think, just Chair, I'm actually hearing kind of what Mr. Reitinger brought to the table. I probably lean a little bit that way, too, just to give the option, because there is an influencing of the calendar that folks who may be elected next year around would want that opportunity. So I'll probably lean that way with the consensus that we're talking about. But I do think, in the near future, it does need to, a true consideration of a two-year calendar does need to happen. I think it works a little bit better planning for families, I think, doing the two-year. But for right now, I'm leaning with folks in doing it for the one-year. But the conversation does need to happen in the future for two.
Thank you, Mr. Webb. I would say, I actually came into this a lot about a two-year calendar, but given that everything that's going on right now and the level of uncertainty we have with what's coming over the next few months, I sort of, I'm also moving with the consensus in that direction, that at least this year, sticking with a one-year calendar makes more sense. And thought about the situation that Mr. Reitinger brought up. That's, I think, something I'd have to sort of put in my head and chew on it a little bit to figure out where I think on that one. But I think I would go this year with a one-year calendar. That's sort of my feeling. Ms. Snyder, I see you nodding. I don't know if you want to comment or agree or disagree.
I guess I would just echo what everyone said about how it's definitely an uncertain time. It just feels strange to be planning, like, two years into the future.
Thank you. The consensus that I hear on this particular question is, this year, folks, the consensus of most of the board seems to be to go with a one-year. We're not actually sure, I think, where we would want to go next year, given what Mr. Reitinger brought up, but also what Dr. Dimick brought up earlier about the sort of need for stability and folks' ability to plan. So this sounds like a conversation that we probably want to have later, but I'm looking later, but before the consideration of next year's calendar to really get started, the board to have a conversation about, sort of saying, would we want a two-year calendar next year or a one-year calendar next year? So I think my sense of the answer for this year is we're talking about one-year. Am I sort of averaging people properly? Dr. Dimick, go ahead.
I'm just wondering about, Dr. Noonan, that what, I agree that these are uncertain times. Is it twice the staff work to do a two-year calendar? Or is it, once you've made the one-year calendar, it's not as hard to do two years? Just to get a sense of if part of the argument is that we can't manage this.
Yeah, thanks, Dr. Dimick. I think we could, I think if it was the will of the board to do a two-year calendar, I think we could do it. I think the questions raised tonight didn't come up to my mind, which was the transition of board members and things like that, potentially. I will share that if we do a two-year calendar, I would want a little bit more clarity, probably around the next pieces, around the holidays. So if you all are looking for a much larger engagement from the community, we don't have the bandwidth to do that right now, that's for sure. So if you are looking for a larger, you know, should we look at these other holidays and, again, wanting further community input from that, we probably should stick with a one-year. But we could do a two-year if you could give me some good guidance tonight, I guess is what I'm saying. I will say this, for the good of the order, the school calendar, I won't call it a nothing burger, because it hasn't been a nothing burger, but it has not been anything like we saw last year, because it's never been like that. So the process is, we put out two or three different options to the staff. They vote on it. We bring it to you, and you say, you typically say yes. We think that we want to go with what the staff decision is. But again, I think if you want more in that, in that, you know, idea of getting more community engagement, particularly around the holidays, we would need to probably wait on that.
Why don't we just, for right now, I've got a marker here on my note that right now, the consensus, the will of the board seems to be around a one-year calendar this year, but we may still want to think about multiple years. But that's just for right now, because it sounds like another consideration is the holiday question. And Vice Chair Russell, I saw you had your hand up.
I was just going to comment on Dr. Noonan's remarks about the calendar being a, I guess, nothing burger. I think that if we decide to go with a traditional calendar, then that would be the case. But even without the community engagement piece, if we wanted to add, I guess if we basically wanted to revamp the whole calendar, whether it's with religious holidays or some of the other state holidays, I think that would probably be, even amongst the staff, a pretty long discussion, maybe not long discussion, but involved discussion. So I think the more substantial changes that the board wants to look at, the bigger of a lift it is going to become for staff. So just my two cents on that one.
So, Dr. Noonan, why don't we go ahead to the next slide, which was the one, I believe, that had the holidays question? Because it sounds like that was a question that might influence people's thinking about the number of years. So as you presented to us, there are other, the other jurisdictions Arlington and Fairfax are considering or have already adopted calendars that have additional holidays. And so the question for us is, what do we feel about these potential additional holidays? Vice Chair Russell?
One thing that I'd like to request is if it would be possible, and I guess this is a little off-topic, to get a list of the state holidays, because I think at this point, we probably generally know, but it might be helpful to have a comprehensive list, just so we could see where they fall on the calendar and also what they actually are.
Thank you, Vice Chair Russell. Other thoughts on holidays? And just a reminder, right, remember, tonight is a discussion and sort of give ideas and feedback, and then Dr. Noonan and staff will actually take that response and come back to us again in November. This isn't the decision day on any of this. Dr. Dimick?
I'll just weigh in on Veterans' Day, because this is something I hear about from friends who have government jobs. They really love that their kids go to school and both parents get the day off. That's...
I'm not going to comment on that, although I could, I suppose. My kid might see this, so I'm not going to say anything. Ms. Downs?
Thank you, Chair Anderson. Yeah, I think echoing Dr. Noonan's comments, I think it is worth, I'm looking at specifically the religious holidays. I think that's worth a more in-depth discussion. And not, again, knowing that we are in the middle of a pandemic right now, so that's probably not for this upcoming year, but I would, you know, eventually, maybe it would be good to take a deeper dive into looking at some of those other religious holidays for the following year.
Thank you, Ms. Downs. Ms. Snyder?
I don't know whether it would be possible, resource-wise, to look into having days off for religious holidays this year, but I know that especially at Mason, students have been really frustrated when they don't get off for religious holidays, when there are, like, school events on religious holidays, too. So I think that's definitely something that should be looked into sooner rather than later. And I know there are a lot of considerations right now, but if we could do it this year, I think that would mean a lot to a lot of people.
Thank you, Ms. Snyder. Mr. Webb?
I do think the religious holiday piece does need to get looked at a little deeper. My question would be within that deeper dive is just looking how we would adjust the calendar to absorb adding holidays to it and/or extending school year or how we would do it. But that's probably one of my bigger questions about adding some of the additional religious holidays. And then I also look at it from a perspective of that inclusion piece that we're talking about now. It does give that opportunity to be a little bit more inclusive of other religions within the school system as we kind of look to be a little bit more inclusive with everything that we're trying to do.
Thank you, Mr. Webb. Looking at Ms. Litten, and I'm also looking at Mr. Reitinger to see, Mr. Reitinger, if you've got any comments that you want to make at this point.
Thank you, Chair. I would lean toward, I don't know why, I'm...
No, we can't.
I was unmuted before. I would prefer, yeah, it's always difficult for me to look at, think about these questions in the abstract without seeing an option before us. So my preference, while it's a bit more work for staff, and I know that's hard at this time, would be to model, as one of the calendar options, what it would look like with those days added to see what the effect is on starting and closing dates. So I would prefer, I think, like Ms. Snyder and Mr. Webb, to see us adopt the appropriately, appropriate religious holidays that we can fit into the calendar for next year, if possible.
Thank you, Mr. Reitinger. Ms. Litten, I don't know if you had any comments that you wanted to make? If not, it's fine.
No, I'm just trying to think through this. Because I would agree with folks that I like the idea of adding the religious holidays. I think it's just trying to figure it out and, you know, do we not do Indigenous Peoples' Day and Columbus Day and instead do, you know, add some religious holidays? You know, I can agree with Mr. Reitinger. It's just, there's a lot of choices to be made there, and it's kind of hard to imagine without seeing. So I do think, at least at some point, if we can't figure it out this year, you know, I think in the future, we definitely should take a look at adding some religious holidays. You know, on the new state holidays, I do think we should give those. I guess the question is, do you also give those to teachers or are they work days? You know, that's kind of a tough one, I think, because since they are state holidays, it does seem like it would make sense to give those to our teachers. But again, it's just kind of making the puzzle work. So I hadn't responded, because I don't really have any answers. Those are just sort of my questions that don't have answers. So, yeah.
Well, that's, we're in a work session, right? We often ask questions that we don't actually have answers for. That's fine. Other thoughts on this one? I will share mine, but I want to make sure that you all have a chance. Dr. Dimick?
I agree with my colleagues that, to be inclusive, it would be great to be able to recognize these other religious holidays that we're not currently recognizing. But I think we also need to be mindful that we will not be doing, I don't think we'll be doing a post-Labor Day start if we do something like that, just because of how September will look and what the calendar will look like. So it's, but I think it's an important decision for us to make.
Thank you, Dr. Dimick. Ms. Litten, go ahead.
And this is kind of a question that I don't know that we even want to go down this road, but I'm trying to, in the past, I think we've sort of built in snow days. And given technology and the way people are now able to work online, you know, I don't know if we've given any thought to, do we still sort of need kind of snow days? Do we think those aren't going to happen, so maybe we don't need to build extra days in? I don't know. I just kind of raise that as a place, I don't even know if we want to go down that road, but I'll just raise it.
Oh, I think that's a great point. The past few years, we haven't had a whole lot of snow with the climate changing, setting aside days that go unused year after year. Maybe we shouldn't set them aside.
Thank you, Ms. Litten. Thank you, Dr. Dimick. I guess I'll add my thought on this one is, I am aligned with the, I would like us to be able to make these religious holidays as holidays in our calendar, but I would need to see the impact of that on the calendar as a whole. So I'm aligned with what Mr. Reitinger said about seeing an option with them and an option without them is probably, for me, what I would need. I think if we can make them happen, Ms. Snyder, we should make them happen. I just think, I myself would like to see the total impact of that, because there's other questions before us as well, like, do we have a target end date for the year? And if we have a target end date and we're adding more holidays, you know, what does that look like on the beginning? I recall from our discussions last year that there was strong support for a two-week winter break, if we want to do that, and these other things. What's the impact on the calendar as a whole? So to me, it's sort of looking at that piece holistically. In response to the question about snow days and climate change, I would point out, The Washington Post had an article that said, "We're going to get 10 times as much snow this winter as last year." And when you click through the clickbait, they pointed out that we got 0.6 inches last year in total. So open question whether that's much of a role, but, you know. Okay, so, I mean, that's sort of where I sit on this, is I would actually like to see a couple of options for us to understand and, you know, at the next discussion, being able to sort of sense what, see what that sense looks like. But Ms. Downs?
Thank you, Chair Anderson. I completely agree with my colleagues. And I guess... Chair Anderson, I completely agree with my colleagues. And I guess I wasn't on the school board when that June 15th end date was sort of vocalized or agreed on. You know, I hate to give a constraint that, you know, I know last year, I think there was a discussion, well, maybe we don't need to end on June 15th, but that was sort of the understood guidance. So I, I mean, I think it's better to give a little bit of flexibility to Dr. Noonan and the staff as they're coming up with some options and not to be so concerned with that hard and fast end date. But that's just my opinion. Thanks.
So I kind of had the sense that people would like to see a couple of options brought forward, one with and one without. But Dr. Noonan, are there other considerations that you wanted to make sure that that would be useful for your, useful for the planning?
We're going to have to work through logistically what that looks like. Typically, we bring you one that the staff has voted on as the option that they've selected. That's traditionally how we've done it, but it doesn't mean we have to do it that way always. So I think we probably will need to all have sort of an internal conversation about, about what we will, what we'll present in November. But I hear you that you'd like to maybe see two options, one with the religious holidays, one without the religious holidays. Some of the, you've already sort of addressed some of the items that are assumptions that we make in the calendar, three days at Thanksgiving, two weeks at winter break, a spring break that's a week long. And, and so when you, when you start to chip away at some of those to build in some other holidays to keep the year sort of constrained, that's one option. The other option is to keep those and then add those days in and let the year go longer. So I mean, what you'll end up seeing, I can tell you now, is the one without will probably have the start date at a certain time and a week earlier end time than the one that has a start date and a week later, when we start to add in these other options. So it really is a matter of, do you, do you want a start date that's the same and end a week earlier or a week later? And I think one of the things that we heard last year and heard before, and I'm just sharing with you very candidly, what I think we heard from the staff was, if you're going to have us come back earlier, we want to get out earlier. Now, if we're able to talk to them and say, yes, but you're also going to have some additional days in there, maybe there's some, some give and take. So we certainly can look at it. I have reached out, just as an example, to the state superintendent to ask if we can have flexibility around Labor Day, because Rosh Hashanah this coming year is the day after Labor Day. And so instead of giving the Friday, could we give the Tuesday? And then that allows us to have a five-day week the week before, but then have two days after Labor Day weekend that includes Rosh Hashanah. That's sort of low-hanging fruit that we could take care of, that would also build in one of the religious holidays. Then we'd look at, how could we get Yom Kippur in? And then looking at Diwali and looking at Eid. I think your questions about online learning are interesting. I do want to just remind the board that when we start, we have, we're required to start with 180 days of instruction. It's not actually 990 hours. So we have to start with an X number of days to start the calendar. And then as we begin to get into snow days and the like, we may change the methodology, the state will let us change the methodology to 990 hours as opposed to 180 days. So we can't start with the 990, if that makes sense. But, but you do raise a good question, you know, about snow days. Do we, do we have snow days now that we can do online learning? I, I think we might get some pushback on that one. But, but I, you know, it's certainly worthy, worthy of a conversation perhaps with, with the team. But, you know, I do think, just in the, in the abstract, I do think it's fair to say that the way we've always done things isn't the way we're going to do things in the future. This, this pandemic is going to change us. And, and one of the ways that it can change us is the school calendar. You know, one example that we shared with some people just the other day was, does it really matter when we start? What if we start the second week of August? I mean, we can't by code, but if we did, and we said, if you can't be here, no problem, just do your work online. We'll stream it. You can do your work wherever you are. If you're overseas, we just need you back in school by X date, you know? So it does provide us with some flexibility that we didn't have before. And then Ms. Snyder, to your point, I, you raise a really good point, and that is that if we can build these days in now, we should. I will say that it's the expectation, at least of the superintendent, that, that our principals are monitoring and ensuring that there's no homework, no tests, no major activities on Rosh Hashanah, on Yom Kippur, on Eid, and on Diwali. And those are right baked into the calendar. So if you're hearing of things that are happening, if you'll let me know, that would be important, because we really want to enforce that strongly, because those are high holy days for our community, many in our community. So, so I guess all of that to say that, that first part, the first question, I think we hear you. I think we've heard kind of what you said, and let us kind of go back and kind of work with what we think we've heard and bring some, some ideas forward that would be, that would be useful that we could get out to the staff. Then the last piece, the last question in here is, are there other considerations? And I think one of the big considerations that we were worried about, or not worried about, thinking about, was the end date. But I think start and end dates can be fluid in some ways now because of the way that we're able to work based on what's happened with online instruction and the like. So, but are there other things that you want us to think about beyond what we've shared already?
Ms. Snyder.
I think in a lot of regards, the start and end dates are fluid. But with all of the SOLs and AP and IB exams, I think that we do need to make sure that we have enough instruction before May. So I don't know whether that would mean starting earlier to make up for the days that we might add as holidays, but having enough days in class is really important to covering that content.
Thank you.
Really good point.
Other comments? Other considerations that folks, Ms. Lyttner?
Going back to what Dr. Noonan was talking about, do we start to think of things differently? When the pandemic is over, if it's ever over a year or two from now, do we think for it to count as a school day for the state, it has to be an in-person, teachers-in-a-building day to count? Or do you think we've moved to a place where online learning counts as a day of school? Or don't we know? We probably don't know.
It's a great question. And what we do know is that so long as every student has a device and every student has access, which our students do, we're very, very fortunate in this community, it can count as a day. So we've been able to make the case that our kids have been in school as long as they've been online.
Other comments? Dr. Dimmick.
But then just to clarify around that, unless we decided to start giving our elementary school kids computers to take home every day, it wouldn't work for Snow Day, because all of our elementary kids would not have computers to do school. And our middle schoolers typically wouldn't be taking their computers home either on a daily basis. But who knows? Maybe all this changes.
I, I think, I think it all changes in many ways because of what we're experiencing. All of our kids have a device now. I'm hard-pressed to think that they wouldn't have a device in the future.
Other comments? Other considerations anybody wants to bring up?
May I ask a question?
Yes.
I'd like to ask a question of our student representative. Winter break is two days, two weeks long traditionally. If we had a two-week-long winter break, is it unreasonable for students if we could get approval from the State Department of Education to say, during this two-week window of time, you have to spend up to eight hours working on a project, working on something that could count as a day?
I mean, I think at least in high school, we already get work over the break. So.
Well, that's not good.
But breaks are supposed to be breaks, and especially when you have a lot of work to do, it's just so important to take that time off and not be on your computer all day. So I would say that we really need to make sure that when we are adding online learning, there's still a boundary between school and everything else.
What if it was independent? What if it was, you have, you have a day of independent work that isn't necessarily tied to logging in? It's just during this period of time of two weeks, you have to do six hours, six and a half hours of independent work around a research topic. I guess the genesis of my question is, if I could make the, the case to the state where one day over a break was a school day, because we were asking our kids to do something independently, then we might be able to build another day of break in for one of the religious holidays. I guess is what I'm trying to, trying to thought far about that. But I.
I think, I think that could work.
Break is a break.
Just as long as it's not like each teacher thinks that they'll be able to assign, I don't know, like three hours of work.
Yeah.
And then also, I guess it could work for high school students, but maybe not for younger kids. But I, then if we're asking the state to approve it, it would probably have to be for everyone in the division.
We could do it through IB. It could be a personal project day, and it could be a, you know, there could be some ways. So we're just kind of thinking out loud here a little bit. So.
Other comments? Other thoughts from anybody? Looking around here, I know Mr. Reitinger has a comment. Please go ahead, Mr. Reitinger.
So I'll just mention on, first on the considerations front, that, you know, my, my general view, I think along with most people who've had kids, is they want school to start as late as possible and end as soon as possible. But those can't be absolutes, right? You know, my, my preference is that kids be out by June 15th, like we've always tried to do, and that school not start more than a week before Labor Day. But depending on what happens with holidays and other sorts of things, I don't know if those are feasible or not. They're just considerations, as opposed to absolute rules. The, the strong opinion I do have, though, is that I'd like to make sure that while we're in this time of still trying to figure out in the new environment when school will end and when it will start, and what the religious holidays will be, that we have a process that allows for board input before the calendar options get locked in. And so if, if by use the process we've always used, that means the board is not involved once we've had this discussion, and then we're presented with an option or two options sometime in December or November, I'm, I'm personally not satisfied by that. I think there needs to be a chance to address some of the challenges that were presented last year, that it wants a calendar committee. And I do think the calendar committee needs to be fully diverse, not from a, certainly from a looking like the community perspective, but making sure that the calendar committee just doesn't include the people that we normally hear from. But that once the work comes out of the calendar committee, that before any surveys be done of staff or the community, if a community survey is being done, that the board has a chance to have input to say something along the lines of, well, what we'd like to see surveyed is this. Because I think otherwise, we're left in a position of denigrating the work of the calendar committee or possibly steering in a different direction than the staff voted if we didn't have a chance to have input on what the options to be presented are. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reitinger. Other comments or questions on this? Just looking around. So I guess I have a procedural question that sort of gets at what Mr. Reitinger was getting at. So Dr. Noonan, we're, we're having our conversation at this work session. It was an intention to have it so that we could give feedback and input into the process so that in November, we would have our next discussion. What is the timeline that you are, you are envisioning at this point, just to make sure that, that, you know, we've got a chance to put it back in our heads, as it were?
Dr. Noonan, could you unmute, please?
Sorry about that. So, so in terms of timing, I know that Ms. Michael and Mr. Bates have begun to put together a calendar outlining the committee's work for as early as the first week in November. And then I think what we could do, I need to sort of work a little bit more closely with them. But the school board work session in November is the 17th, and I think we could bring some options on the 17th to the board that shows, you know, one option with the, with the religious holidays and another option without the religious holidays, or, or, or a couple of different options with each for you all to look at and then give us some feedback. And then what we would do is go back to that committee, share the feedback from the board, and then get a survey out to our staff the first part of December, so that you all would have an opportunity to vote on that, we hope, December 8th.
Thank you. Mr. Reitinger, the, the timing of that, does that go towards, towards addressing the comment that you brought up?
Absolutely, Chair. I, I think that would be advisable and make sure that the survey we did of staff was appropriate. I do wonder, it sounds as if the administration is not thinking about surveying parents, students, et cetera, this time, but to go back to a process where they are not surveyed. Is that correct?
That is our, that was our plan, was to return to the original process of doing the school calendar that, that we had done prior to last year for the last several years prior to that.
I, well, I do think whether that's the right process, I'm not certain one way or the other, but especially if we're looking at whether or not to include religious holidays, which may lengthen the school year by a week. I, I, I don't know that the community won't expect input. I'm, I'm not sure. I just raised the question.
So I see the point you're raising, Mr. Reitinger. I would say that, you know, we will, as we're having our conversations in our work sessions and in the meetings, the community is certainly going to let us know if they are feeling that a, you know, a choice is being made or being considered that, that they don't like in some sense or that they're strongly in favor of. We'll certainly get public comments. I myself hadn't had in mind at all the idea of, of another calendar survey for this year, but that's just in my head, you know? And so I certainly wasn't thinking along those lines, because we certainly have the ability to get input on an ongoing basis from, from public comment. But if the, if the other parts of that process were, I think that the timing, Dr. Noonan, that you laid out makes sense to me. So I'm looking around the room for strong language of any sort. And then I think we're going to bring this one to a close and go ahead and move on to the next chunk. So Ms. Downs.
Thank you, Chair Anderson. And that was what I was, I guess, wasn't very clear on. My point was if we are looking to include the religious holidays for this upcoming year, it probably will alter the calendar significantly. And I know we are not doing a survey because of everything going on right now, and we just don't have, have the time or the resources dealing with COVID-19. So I guess that was my point was, if we wanted to do more for the following year, do more of a survey of how that calendar would be affected by including the religious, I'm off, you know, I completely, you know, for being inclusive, understand the, and have a desire to include those religious holidays, but it is going to affect the calendar pretty significantly, I think. And I'm just not sure if the, if the community would be following it this way on just watching, you know, if the word is going to get out. And so I think, you know, I think if it, if it is altered drastically, you know, by, you know, almost adding a week in because we've added these religious, I just think we probably need to communicate that somehow soon rather than later. Thank you.
All right. Vice Chair Russell has a comment and then I'll, I'll just make a quick comment back and then we'll stop. So go ahead.
Thank you, Chair Anderson. Along the lines of Ms. Downs' comments, I think we would also want to get community input with regard to the state holidays, whether if we want to start swapping ones out or adding ones. So I think that that would also be something that we'd want to understand, especially in light of Ms. Demick's earlier comment regarding Veterans Day. So I think that that was very enlightening and we would want to get a better sense of how the community feels about adding one in or taking one out and so on and so forth.
All right. So thank you, Vice Chair Russell. All, I want to sort of bring this to a close now and we can continue the dialogue, but I guess I would just say, oh, sorry.
I, I just want to make sure. There's been a couple of comments about surveys. I don't think we can do a survey this year. Okay. Okay. I just want to make sure. But I do want you to, if we can build in a couple of minutes, it's a start. But if there's a minimal impact, we'll look at that as well.
What I, what I was just going to say was actually that it sounds like we'd like to see a couple of options, one with and one without. And if it turns out that the impact is not as severe as we think, we would be able to make a different choice potentially. So I think, I just would say, let's go ahead and, and we'd like to see a couple of options, Dr. Noonan, in, in our November work session, one with, one without, and then the ability to have another dialogue and more discussion about this and then make a choice after that, so. All right. Why don't we go ahead and, and move now to our, to our next item? I am looking at the clock. It's been an hour and a half. Just want to make sure, do folks, would anyone like to take a little break, a couple of minutes, get up, walk around, that kind of thing? If so, we can stop. Otherwise, if, if that isn't what folks want to do, that's fine, too. All right. Not seeing a strong thing. If anybody does individually need to get up, just go ahead. So we'll move on to 3.04, our monthly budget monitoring report, and Dr. Noonan.
I think Mr. Redinger might be raising his hand.
Oh, thank you, everybody, for telling me this. I'm looking around. Mr. Redinger, go ahead.
Yeah, apologies for being remote. I just wanted to, to point that, you know, we haven't taken a vote on the process. We feed back to the school administration. And so I think my comments, we have the work session in November to give feedback. But at this point in time, I'm not agreeing anything about a survey or not about a survey. I think all open for the board to decide. And I also heard Dr. Noonan's points about it being not possible, but I want to see what the modeling options are for stand on what.
Mr. Redinger, I'm sorry, but we're having a lot of trouble hearing you. I think you might be having some internet issues on your end. It's breaking up. You're on mute. Can you try again?
I can try. Could you hear anything I said?
It was really kind of fractured.
My apologies. I, I just wanted to point out that the, the board hasn't taken a vote on next steps, that we've given a sense to the board, the sense to the school administration and that I'm perfectly happy to abide by that and then decide on next steps once the options are presented by the administration. But in terms of what things will be necessary to obtain community input and the steps to be taken once we give the feedback, I'm, I'm reserving my options to argue for or vote for a different approach based on what the options that are presented are.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Redinger. I appreciate that. I hadn't intended for us to take a vote tonight on, on this particular topic. This was intended to be initial discussion, give feedback, give guidance, see then what comes forward in November. And, you know, if, if there's a strong desire and somebody wants to go forward with some additional discussion, we've already heard that a, a survey is probably, is really just not likely to be feasible given the workload that's already underway this year, but if there's other ways of getting that input, why don't we revisit this in November to see if there's additional information that you need at that point? But I hadn't intended to take a, a voting action tonight. All right. Looking around. Thank you for flagging, flagging things. If, if that happens again, let me know. All right. So we'll move on to 3.04, our monthly budget monitoring report, and Dr. Noonan.
Great. Thank you so much, Chair Anderson. We're going to, I'm going to turn it over here to Kristin Michael. And then I think at the end I'm going to raise another point. So I'll turn it over to Kristin to get started and we're going to try to keep us on track to get us out by nine o'clock.
The pressure's on me to talk fast, but not too fast. So thank you for the opportunity to present the monthly financial report. This is September, which is month three. And again, thank you so much to Michelle Koppick, our Budget and Finance Director, for all of her work that she did to let me present this to you tonight. On the first page, we have a summary chart of revenue and expenditures by major category, and I'll talk through those first. And then on the following pages, we have a comparison with the prior two fiscal years. And then I also want to talk at the end about some CARES Act funding that's new for this year. So I'm just going to hit the high points in terms of revenue. Other revenue, just as a reminder, is primarily tuition from students that are attending either George Mason or Jesse Beckery preschool and revenue from stop arm cameras. So we're watching both of those categories very closely. In terms of our state aid, our state aid is tracking as we had budgeted because we're still being paid on the projected average daily membership that we had from the fall. So again, just that reminder that in the event that the General Assembly doesn't include a hold harmless provision on attendance, we could see a decrease in state aid later in this fiscal year. So again, something that we're monitoring. Our sales tax is actually a really bright spot. That makes me really happy. In September, we get our sales tax from July. And the state had forecasted that sales tax would go down for us by 350,000 this year, but our sales tax collections in July were actually 6.9% higher than last year and 27% above that reduced projection. So truly a bright spot. Again, it's a cautionary note first month, but we'll continue to monitor it. When we look at our expenditure side, our expenditures are tracking consistently with last year. So for our salaries, we have one month of teacher salaries, just the month of September in this report. So it's very early in the fiscal year and three months of our 12-month employees. So we currently have 87.9% available compared to 87.1% last year for salaries, very similar. And in terms of benefits, nearly identical, 85.7% available compared with 85.9% last year. When we look at our other expenditures, we're currently tracking above last year and that's due to the COVID expenditures that we've made this year to address COVID-19. So I wanted to talk a little bit about CARES Act funding. I'm scrolling. There we go. So when we look at CARES Act funding, we got good news from the state. On October 7th, the governor announced a new statewide allocation of more than 220 million statewide in federal coronavirus recovery and economic security, or CARES Act, funding that went out to all K-12. And they allocated that funding using a per pupil methodology. So we received $175 per pupil. So that provided us with new funding of $453,180 that has to be spent to mitigate the impacts of COVID. That's added to the 322,000 that the general government has already allocated to us. Then Dang Nguyen submitted a technology grant and we received a grant for $11,921 in technology funding. And our budget for this current year did include $37,599 in CARES Act funding originally. So overall, the support that we've gotten from CARES Act is just nearly $825,000. So we look at that funding, I want to go over just a little bit about the things that we're working on purchasing with that funding. Right? So first is the camera equipment and technology in our classrooms that will allow us to stream instruction using our online learning management system, Schoology, to help support our online connections for students, to provide our supervised virtual learning, which is that supervision of our staff members' children so they can be present and teaching, to provide any substitute coverage that we've needed for employees who've been out due to COVID illnesses, to provide personal protective equipment for our staff, right? That includes things like face shields, plexiglass barriers, other things that they need to be safe. For facility cleaning and sanitizing, that includes our building as well as our buses. To purchase additional signage, you can see some on the floor here reminding people to stay six feet apart, for example. And then we can also use it for things like facilities maintenance. So that could be HVAC cleaning, improving the filtration of our buildings, which we've done. It could include putting in the wiring for those cameras that we're installing. So we will come back to the school board in November and go over our CARES Act spending with you in detail. So last month, the school board did approve expenditures for our capital improvement fund to help us switch over to LED lighting in our buildings that haven't been switched over as well as to put some new flooring in Mary Ellen Henderson. So those were the adjustments that we made from our capital improvement fund. Then using our available ending balance from FY '20, we approved additional financial support for our food service fund if it was significantly impacted by COVID. And then we also set aside our abated rents. So after all of those adjustments, we had an available fund balance of 2.8 million and we had used 450,000 of that as a budgeted beginning balance in FY '21. So we have placed the available balance report from last month on our website as lo, along with our budget book for FY '21. So you'll see the full approved document there. And John went back, thank you, John, and reorganized and the proposed information is there as well. So you can find all of that in our website at www.fccps.org/budget. Dr. Noonan?
That was fast, Ms. Michael. Very well done. So, so the last piece of the monthly budget report that I wanted to talk a little bit about with you all was something that I also put in the Friday update. And that was related to some comments that I made to the staff earlier in the year when unfortunately we had to make some significant cuts to the superintendent's proposed budget based on what happened with COVID. And when I met, when I met with staff on a, you know, routine basis following that, some of the things that I was really clear about, one of the things I was really clear about was that when there was some extra funding available, that I would look at it to see if there were some way that we could potentially provide some sort of compensation to some of our staff members. And unfortunately, we haven't been able to capture at this point any significant ongoing savings, recurring savings. However, we are monitoring that closely and we may end up with some at the end of the year based on some other things that are happening. But what we have been able to identify is, is some ending year balance from last year. And then for our certified teachers that put in an extraordinary and, and paraprofessionals that put in some extraordinary number of hours preparing for the COVID response with respect to online teaching and online learning, we have some additional dollars that when combined with some of our year-end balance, we would be able to do a one-time increment for our staff. And I am proposing that we do that one-time increment for our staff, combining both year-end balance and some of the CARES Act funding that would go towards some of that planning that our teachers did, come out sometime in the paycheck between the Thanksgiving holiday and the winter holiday. And the amount that we are looking at is $1,000 per contracted employee, so long as they're employed on the date that we give the, the increment, which would be on or about November 23rd. We feel like it, it speaks to our commitment that we made to our staff to pour whatever we've found back into compensation. And based on what Ms. Michael has shared this evening, we've been able to do the infrastructure update, the, the infrastructure revisions necessary to be ready for, for, for the coming year, whether it's the cameras at Mary Ellen Henderson. We've done the cameras at the high school. We are looking at, we, we also are purchasing out of that some revision, air quality controls over at the high school and also been able to take care of other cleaning supplies and, and overtime that was necessary and then also some other equipment. So tonight, we wanted to share with you that it's our, our hope that you all would support moving forward with that spending to go back to our employees. And we would bring it to you as a, a formal, a, a formal action item in the November board meeting.
Thank you, Dr. Noonan, thank you, Ms. Michael. Are there questions or comments from board members on this? Ms. Downs?
Thank you, Chair Anderson. Thank you, Dr. Noonan, and thank you, Ms. Michael. I, I just wanted I, to say, I think, you know, understanding that we've done all the work in terms of purchasing equipment and cameras and PPE and that's all been taken care of. I think it's a fantastic idea to, you know, follow up with what we promised and we would do the best we could to, you know, given that the budget predicament we're in, we can't follow through with those raises that we were hoping and, and the colas and this, and the steps. And that we're going to do the best we could to anything that we could find to compensate our staff. And we all know, you know, throughout the past couple of months, everyone in this room has used the term heavy lift, you know, and talking about our teachers and staff and getting ready to go hybrid. I'm sorry, going vertical and the hybrid. And so I think it's a fantastic idea. So I know we're not voting tonight, but I do support it. Thank you very much. But I do support it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Downs. Other comments, other questions, anything? Mr. Redinger?
Thank you, Chair. First, to agree with Ms. Downs, I'm fully supportive if money can be legally spent to provide an increment to our staff, teachers, support staff and other folks who have sacrificed so much and lost out on any sort of raise this year. I think the proposal from the administration makes imminent sense and I, I expect to be fully supportive of that. The one thing I did want to ask in terms of techno, what you funding and this relates to some of the, the points about the sort of the new environment that were raised in the last discussion is does it make any sense or are there any plans that we might in some circumstances in the future have teachers teaching from home? Not if they're actually sick, but if they're quarantined for some reason. Would we want to have equipment available for teachers to be able to remotely teach rather than having a substitute come in who doesn't know the material as well? That obviously only probably works at the high school and maybe the middle school level. But if there's technology funding available, I would just, without knowing whether that's feasible or not, urge consideration of whether to make some initial investments in that space.
Thank you, Mr. Redinger. Just to respond to that, that has been a, a significant part of our strategy. In the event someone needs to quarantine but is still healthy enough to work, that they would actually be online teaching from home while there was another adult in the classroom to manage behavior and operations and the like in the classroom. If that is the case where someone's doing that and they need additional technology, we believe that we have quite a bit that will, we'd be able to outfit them with. But we actually see that, for example, we have one teacher who is going to be out for a while at one of our schools. She's going to be teaching from home and there will be a substitute in the classroom because she's going to be out for quite a while, with essentially be out for longer. But she'll be teaching from her home while the substitute's in class. And so it is actually a feasible solution even, even at the elementary school. So thank you for raising that.
Thank you, Mr. Redinger. Thank you, Dr. Noonan, and Vice Chair Russell.
Thank you, Chair Anderson. One other request that I'd like to make, if there was additional funding that became available for any reason, is I would love to see us put the money back into the budget for the furniture for the Matt Daniel outdoor classroom. I know that was something on the terrace initially and then we had to remove it. But I'd love to see it reinstated just because I think that that's going to be a very valuable space. And from what I understand from our previous conversations, you've already been purchasing heat lamps and things like that, so it could be usable. Or maybe I imagine. heat lamps and things like that, so it could be usable, or maybe I imagine that part. But let's just say we purchased some heat lamps. And so I would love to just make that request and put that out there.
Thank you. Thank you, Vice Chair Russell. Anyone else on this topic? Ms. Downs.
Thank you, Chair Anderson. I just have one question about, so I read, Ms. Michael read in your report about the, still about the "hold harmless" and because of our reduction in enrollment. And Dr. Newton, looking at your Newton's note, so if I'm understanding, just right now, they've agreed, they're delaying cutting that aid. So there still hasn't been a decision on the "hold harmless," is that correct?
That is correct. It will happen. A decision will be made in this upcoming legislative session.
Okay.
For the good of the board and the I'm sorry, I think I was muted. That is correct, that it is going to be, that decision will be made in this legislative session for the good of the board. And Mr. West, if it's all right with you, I'll share with the board that Mr. West and I had a really good conversation yesterday with Delegate Simon, who is in support of making sure that we remain whole as a school system and will fight for that. Along with Mr. Anderson as well. It's been good. That there is growing to hold districts harmless with their ADM. That doesn't mean it's done. It's never until the bell rings. Keeping it on the legislative agenda is something that's important, but we're hoping that it'll turn out okay.
Okay. Thank you. And one other quick question. I was interested in the tuition paying students. How many, did we have a reduction in those students as well?
So we are not currently charging tuition at Jesse Thackeray preschool because we don't have community peers there. At George Mason, I'll need to check and see if we have a reduced number of students from last year.
I was just curious, because I know that we've, you know, had some students pop to be homeschooled. I was just curious. Thank you.
Yeah, so far of the tuition that we've received, $44,000 is coming from George Mason, but I'll check the numbers.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Not seeing any last questions. I'll just say I'm fully aligned with, if the money can be spent legally and exists, then we can make that use, anything that we can do to compensate the staff and thank them for the work that they're doing. An increment, I'm fully on board with as well. So, all right. So we will, looking around for any last thoughts and not seeing any, we'll go ahead and move on to our next item. And I want to say we'll probably be wrapping up here in about 9:15, because we've got some pictures to look at and some updates on the high school construction that's happening not even 50 meters in that direction, so I want to make sure that we have the time to hear that. But 9:15-ish is sort of the goal. So, Dr. Newton, can we go ahead to your high school construction update?
Of course we can. I will try to talk fast. I'll talk as fast as I did for my walk today through the building. I hustled through, I broke a sweat, because I wanted to get as many pictures as up-to-date as I possibly could of the high school to be able to share with you this evening. The presentation that I wanted to share with you tonight is straight pictures with just a couple of the spaces of where we are. We are currently T-minus 56 days and counting to substantial completion. And when you see our picture is kind of going through, you're going to say to yourself, "How's that possible?" Because it doesn't look like it's going to be done. But I assure you, as Gil Bane has said to us, it's going to be a little bit like a crash landing of a plane. Everything's going to all happen at once. But when you get into the building and you see what's going on, there are some pretty significant things happening that are final finishes. Tile is going in, in the hallways, bathroom tile going in, fixtures into the bathroom, sinks are going in, and the like. So I'm going to ask Kristin to kind of roll through these for you. The first thing you'll see is the new front. Actually, Kristin, if you'll toggle back and forth just for a second, from the picture to that, so our, no, the one before it. So hopefully, that looks like that. I was kind of doing that for fun today. It was sort of silly in my office, but it was really kind of nice. Anyway, that is the front. You'll see it's really taking shape. Most of the windows in the front are in, the ones that are out, any of the windows that are out are currently being used for loading. The building's completely dried in, all the brickwork is done, almost 100% of the glass is in, and it's really, really beginning to take shape. So if you walk in the front door, the first thing, go ahead, actually, let me show you from the backside. This is the backside from the football, or from the stadium field, two different perspectives. I took a look at something else the other day, and I thought it would be a great opportunity to share what it looks like from back there. It's absolutely stunningly beautiful if you have a chance to get back there. But the thing that you'll note here is that it is really close to the field, and the two hype tunnels, which you can't see behind the fencing that's there, that the silt fence and the other fence are there, and those go directly into also into the athletics area. But when you walk into the school for the first time, you will see the heart of the school. You have two perspectives here. The one on the left actually is, as you're walking in the door, as you look forward, you'll see a second tier in the back. That actually is the tier where the cafe or the Mustang mug is going to be. And I'll talk more about the Mustang mug in a minute. On the right-hand side is the auditorium. That is going to have some beautiful artwork and graphics along there. And then on the left side, the two windows up above are looking into the media center. And then below, kind of where that scissor lift is, will be where there are going to be a couple of screens. One is going to be, there'll also be a kiosk there, and where do you, sort of a wayfinding marker as well. And then the picture on the right is looking down from the Mustang mug over the railing back towards the front of the school. So you see the storefront all the way in the back, it's all glass. It's two layers of glass, so you come in at one door, you're in the security vestibule, and then there's the other. You have to go through the office to get out. And then when you have this perspective, on the right-hand side is the administrative offices and the media center, and on the left-hand side is the big wall that's associated with the auditorium. So, speaking of the front offices, this is a little bit hard to tell, but one of the things that's most important in this picture is that there's drywall up, there are windows going in, and the ceiling grid is in. So when the ceiling grid is in and drywall is in, you know that you're making some good progress there. So the one on the left is just looking down the hallway at some offices on the right and left. On the bottom right, it's kind of looking into a sort of a conference room area, and then upper, I'm sorry, that's actually looking into the principal's office there. And then the upper left is just the larger area. When you come into the office, that's the first thing you'll see are those windows looking out. So speaking of the auditorium, this is the beautiful auditorium going in. Just as a reminder to everybody, this will seat 650 people. The bottom-left photo is looking at the stage from about the middle of the house, if you will. You'll see the nice wide proscenium opening. There's a catwalk that you can sort of see up above there. Underneath those plastic drapes is the sound system, and those are in because they're finishing up some drywall right now, and they don't want to get them dusty. And they're also painting in there as well. The upper right, you'll see, looking back from the stage, so I'm standing on the stage there, you'll see two things. One is above the control booth with the two window openings where the spots are going to be, the follow spots. And then below is sort of that bump-out area where there's additional seating in the back. So there'll be about three or four rows of seating in that sort of coved area, if you will, on the bottom, that you also see in the upper-right photo, but all the way in the back. This is the media center and FCC TV. So on the left-hand side, I'm in a hallway, and I'm looking into the FCC TV studio. That studio is going to feel a little bit like Good Morning America, for example. When you walk down the street in New York City, you look in the window and you see the crew of Good Morning America, you see the TV equipment sort of rolling around. That's what you'll see there. That's the studio portion of FCC TV. Inside those windows is the control booth, and then on the other side of that are the offices for FCC TV. The upper left is looking at the media center from about where the circulation desk is going to be. So as you come into the media center from having your drink at the Mustang mug, you'll look back into the media center, looking out at those windows and seeing those columns. Up in the front, where the windows are coming in and you see the light, that actually opens up quite a bit up in that area, too. So it's got a really nice volume to it. On the bottom right is the career and college center, and that's where it is also housed in the media center. So speaking of the Mustang mug, on the right-hand side, this is going to be a grab-and-go food and drink, food and beverage sort of area for our students on the second floor, right outside of the media center. So when you come to the second floor, when you come into the building and you go up the stairs, it'll take you right to the Mustang mug. You can get a drink, you can get a snack, you can get whatever you desire right there. There'll be some nice seating. And as you're sitting down, what you see on the right-hand side is that view looking back towards the heart of the school. So students will be sitting there, hanging out, having something to drink, talking about their IB projects, and looking out towards the front of the school. This is the main gym. It looks super clean because they are getting ready to start putting the flooring down, which is really exciting. But I'm on the, sort of the mezzanine, if you will, walking across from the cafeteria area over towards the auxiliary gym. You have this mezzanine you can look over, and what you see in front of you there are two big areas of, or three big areas of glass, where you see the plastic on the bottom of the right, I'm sorry, of the left-hand picture is where the doors will be, and those doors will lead to a patio or porch, if you will, that will be overlooking the stadium field. And then on the right, upper right, you'll see our scoreboards are in, which is really exciting. And that area that kind of bumps underneath where the lights are, that looks like kind of a bulkhead, is where the bleachers are going to be on the right-hand side. And on the left, bottom, I'm sorry, on the bottom right, you'll see the left-hand side of the gym where the bleachers are going to be. And our gymnasium, the main gymnasium, will seat about 1,500 students. So then we have the auxiliary gym. This, too, is a really great space. You'll see down at the bottom, they're starting to paint some of the sides red, so it's going to be full-on red and black. You're going to know you're in the Mustang gyms when you're at Mason. And here, you'll see, again, the beautiful light looking outside. This is actually the level, this is the area where the indoor track is. So you'll see that the railing is starting to go in around the top, but we are on a portion of the indoor track. And if you run around, we've counted, it's about 10 times two a mile. So if you get around that track about 10 times, you're in a mile. What you see on the right-hand side is the gym floor, looking down off that mezzanine level of the auxiliary gym. But the really cool thing that you're looking at there, that's all the wood flooring that's going to go into the main gym. So it's being staged there. It is acclimatizing to the space that it's going to go in, and I'm really excited about that, starting in the next couple of days. So here we are on the third floor, and each of these floors has a moniker. And part of the moniker is for wayfinding, and part of it is to reflect, in some ways, the environmental sustainability that we believe in as part of this building. So the third floor is the land, the floor of land, if you will. So you'll see green, green representing the earth and the ground. And on the upper-left-hand side, what you'll see is one of the areas that will be a breakout area for students. Bottom right is one of our typical classrooms. So you walk, I'm sorry, bottom left. Bottom left is a typical classroom. You would walk in, and you'll see in that classroom there is a camera that's coming down from the ceiling, and that is one of the AVER cameras that's been installed that we're going to use to be able to stream our classrooms when we go back. Right down the middle, you'll see what are called solar tubes, and these are tubes that are bringing light in from the outside. And those solar tubes are in the fifth-floor outdoor classroom or outdoor space. So it's bringing in light from the fifth floor, past the fourth floor, down to that third-floor area. On the upper right, you'll see just kind of a look, looking down the hallway at one end of the hallway, so you get a sense of the width and the volume of those hallways. And then on the bottom right is sort of standing in the middle of the hallway, looking up at the fourth floor, looking at the solar tubes that are on that fifth floor. And you have an overlook in that area where fourth-floor students can look over to the third-floor students. Here we are on the fourth floor. The fourth floor is the water floor, represents water, so you'll see blue. And all of the rooms have one accent wall of the blue, just like on the floors prior, it's green, and on the fifth floor, it's yellow. But this is very similar to the third floor in terms of makeup, so you can start to see the volume of the hallway. You'll see the glass breakout area right down the middle. On the bottom left, something that's really important to this community, and I think to the board, that we heard loudly and clearly through the planning process was, please make sure that we have an opportunity to expand if we ever need to. So that area is going to be an open space with soft seating, can be used as a large classroom and the like. But when the time comes, if we do grow, or when we do grow, that gives us three additional classroom spaces on the fourth floor. And on the fifth floor, we also have a space like that so that we have an opportunity to grow by six total floors. On the bottom right, you will see a typical classroom. That is not the flooring that's going in, just by the way. That is a concrete floor that's been poured, and then the luxury vinyl tile will go on top of that. But again, really great light, nice windows looking out, that actually looks out over the metro. And then on the upper right, you will start to see bathrooms. So you come around sort of what looks like a giant structural piece there, and you walk into the restroom on the fourth floor. On the fifth floor, it's yellow for sun, so we've got earth, water, and sun, right? And on the left-hand side, you'll see a fairly typical classroom. On the upper right, that's another one of those two spaces that can be later created into three classrooms if we need to. But they are going to be excellent spaces for students to be able to sit, to be able to collaborate. If a couple of teachers want to come together and hold a joint class together, a lecture area and the like, it will be really nice. Right in the bottom center, you'll see this is a science lab. Some of the casework is starting to go in, which is really exciting. So we're starting to see some casework. And then on the bottom right, this is kind of just looking back down the hallway, and you'll see that bulkhead that sort of overhangs the hallway, and that indicates that that's another breakout area where the flooring's going to be a little bit different underneath that bulkhead. And so kids can come there, students can come there and can work on their projects and work together. Here's the Innovation Commons. You've heard us talk about that a few times. It's a little bit hard to tell what things are, but on the left-hand side, on the upper left, you will see a picture with a lot of scaffolding in front of something. And that scaffolding is in front of the learning stair. So you might remember the big learning stair that's going to be coming down from the fourth floor down to the third floor into the Innovation Commons. But that's the learning stair. It still needs to be finished with two more stairs to step down. But in this great space, there's going to be a lot of opportunity for students to congregate, to have productions and shows and robotics and all kinds of things, which leads to the bottom-left picture, which is a wide-open area that will ultimately have a garage door that rolls up and down there. It's going to be, I think, like a 36-foot light garage door. So there'll be 36 glass windows that roll up and roll down for different purposes. And so what I would anticipate, because you can see on the bottom left, I'm sorry, bottom right, I'm standing inside that door frame, you can look back towards that learning stair. So we could have Shakespeare in the Park, we could have a Battle of the Bands, we could have, you know, poetry slams. We could do a million different things in this unprogrammed space that I would be standing in, looking back at the learning stair, and I'm very excited about that. If I'm standing just on the outside of that open door and I'm looking up to my left, you will see in the upper-right-hand picture, that is the environment you will see in the upper-right-hand picture, that is the environmental science room. That's where we have put in some extra infrastructure for drainage and also flooring so that as we continue our work with the Ed Foundation and look at outfitting that classroom with other hydroponic kinds of things to really be able to showcase that room, that becomes then a really incredible environmental science and sustainability classroom. The next is the third-floor green roof and terrace and also the fifth-floor reflection garden. It doesn't look like either of those right now. But the left-hand side is the third-floor green roof terrace, and that's looking directly back towards George Mason High School. But that will be a vegetative roof with some seating outside and a patio, so students will be able to go out. Ms. Russell, you'd be pleased to know we do have some furniture already purchased for that outdoor patio there. And then on the right-hand side is the outdoor reflection garden on the fifth floor. So remember when I was talking about the solar tubes, those are the solar tubes. So those three above-grade or above roofline tubes are those that are bringing light into that third and fourth floor. So some areas for breakout. I had indicated earlier on the left-hand picture, you'll see that bulkhead. And underneath that bulkhead is going to be soft seating. There'll be a monitor on that wall there, so students will be able to break out. And then each floor has, or I'm sorry, on floors four and five, those two floors have these, on the right-hand side, glass conference rooms that are available that will have tables and chairs for staff or students that want to come and have meetings. And what's nice about this is you're sitting in one of those conference rooms. You'll be able to look out, see what's happening below, see what's happening in the hallway and the like. Faculty and staff rooms, this doesn't do it justice, but this is a really large space where our faculty and staff will be able to congregate. We have one on three, four, and five. In each of these faculty and staff rooms, there's a couple of things of note. One is that there is a kitchenette that's available. So each one will have a kitchenette, have a refrigerator, dishwasher, disposal and the like. Each one has a conference room that will seat about ten people. There's also a meditation or private space, a quiet room if you need it. And then just outside of the doors, there will be an employee restroom as well. Then looking outside for a second, you might recall that on the backside, we're going to have all the new fields and the new stadium for softball and the new tennis court. Where you see this truck on the bottom left is the drive lane back to the new parking lot that's going in, and it's being paved right now. So this runs along sort of the ring road of Wamata, if you will. So if you're looking at it to the, if you're looking at this picture, to the left is Route Seven. And that will, will go back, and that parking will be going back a ways. On the bottom right, you'll see where the geothermal fields are. And then on the upper right, you'll see, this is the backside of the school. And you can see in the black, it's a little bit hard to tell, but the black brick sort of in the middle of the picture is where the cafeteria wraps Mary Ellen Henderson. So that will be some, some good common space there. So that, that's a quick tour of the high school. Some of you have had a chance to go through it with, with us in the last couple of weeks. It's been really great to walk you around, and I'd be happy to answer any questions. I know that Mr. Redinger asked the question, are we putting AVER cameras in the open space, the possible future classroom space in case they're being used for big extended classes? Mr. Redinger, I'll have to go back and, and look into that. We are putting them in every classroom. I don't know that we put them in those spaces, so let me check on that and get back with you. All right. If you have to answer any questions.
Thank you, Dr. Noonan. That was, it's awesome to see that, awesome to see that building rising and coming to this completion. Are there comments, questions from anyone? I am suppressing so many bad dad jokes right now on some of the pictures, but we'll move on, so. Ms. Snyder?
Thank you. It's so wonderful to see all the photos of the new school just because we're going to be in the new school starting in January. And I know, I'm really excited about it, and I know a lot of the other students at Mason are really excited about it. On that note, thank you for listening to us about the start date for when we would go back. That's awesome. One question I do have is, when will the parking lots be done? And how much parking will be available to students?
I don't know if everybody heard that question, so let me repeat it just to make sure. First of all, thank you for your input on return date. I know our seniors are really anxious and excited to get back. And I'm excited to have our seniors come back before everybody else to sort of learn the building and sort of take a leadership role in, in understanding the building and helping our younger students. So the question that was asked was about parking. That new parking lot will be done. The Henderson parking lot will continue to be open. The Mason parking lots will continue to be open. And then when demolition begins on the old high school, the Falls Church Gateway Partnership is required to provide us additional parking to offset anything that's been lost. So we will be able to maintain, for the most part, all of our parking that we've had. The one thing that's interesting, Ms. Snyder, is that as we come back and we go into a hybrid, we'll only need for students half the number of, of spaces that we traditionally have, have needed. Although our staff will, will need all of the spaces as well.
Dr. Noonan, Ms. Snyder, anything else?
That's it.
Okay, thanks. Any other, anyone else? Comments, questions? And Mr. Redinger, I am looking at you as well, just to make sure. All right, not seeing any, I can't suppress this any longer. The reflection garden, it may not look like a garden, but it certainly has the reflection down in the picture. Sorry, couldn't resist. It's that time of night. All right. Last chance for any other questions or comments. And I would just like to say, Dr. Noonan, thank you. And it, the progress continues to be amazing, staying on time, on budget, given everything that's going on into the work that you and the team have been doing to make this happen. It's really wonderful to see. And thank you for the opportunity to see some, some updated pictures. All right, in the, I'm looking around now for any other final business and not seeing any from anyone. So with that, I would say the next thing on our agenda is to adjourn, and we will adjourn the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.